Commitment to order for tonight. And we have just one item on our agenda tonight. And that is the long awaited CED 2021 Year in Review. So looking forward to this presentation tonight. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Chip Vincent.
Okay. Oh, thank you so much, President McIrvin, Council members, Chip Vincent from CED. And I think long awaited is the right words to describe this presentation. Every year in December, we come before the Planning and Development Committee, and we'd like to do our Year in Review, reflecting on all of the work that we started at the beginning of the year and accomplished by the end of the year. Last year, 2021, was such a busy year. Literally, we had it on the agenda for the last Planning and Development Committee, and we never got to it. So with your presence tonight, we expect a little bit to include the entire department. So the council's going to get a chance to hear from all four division heads tonight in what was accomplished in each of the divisions of CED. So I'm really looking forward to this, and I'll come back later. But we're going to start with the presentation with our Planning Director, Vanessa Dolby.
Okay, can you all hear me this evening? Okay, let me start by sharing my screen. Forgive me one second here. Okay, I hope you're all seeing a screen that says Committee of the Whole.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Now, we're starting in the right space. So thank you for the introduction. Chip, good evening, Council President, members of the committee. I get to start off by just kind of going through all of the projects. And what I want to say is that this list of projects that I'll highlight from 2021 is an effort of all of CED, including our inspectors, our building inspectors, our construction inspectors, our permit techs, our planners, our engineers, and our long-range planning team, our economic development team. So this is all inclusive and not just planning, just because I'm the one presenting. I just got the winning ticket to do this portion of the presentation. So I'm going to start off with two groundbreaking events we had in 2021 that were super exciting. The first one is Top Gulf. Think you're all familiar with this project and what it entails. It's going to be located just south of the Landing. The groundbreaking event was held on August 3rd. And what I like here about this picture is you can see all that dirt in the background. And if you go down there today, it looks absolutely nothing like that. You can see the building coming out of the ground. And frankly, from my perspective, it looks like it's almost done. I know they have a long ways to go, but we're looking forward to the grand opening ceremony, hopefully they have there. Next groundbreaking we had was for the Solera Development. This was a fairly significant redevelopment of the Highlands Shopping Center up in the Sunset area. It's over a 10-acre site. It includes over 600 residential units, actually almost 700 residential units, 39,000 square feet of commercial space, and it includes mixed income of affordable and market rate, as well as homeownership opportunities on the townhome portion of the development. That also is currently under construction. You can see some dirt moving up there as well. There's a picture from the groundbreaking on August 31st. So August was a busy month for groundbreaking events. And then moving on to a laundry list of completed projects. And I'm going to define completed as actually projects that received their Certificate of Occupancy from the City of Renton. So this means that these projects came all the way through the permitting process. They've completed all their inspections, and people are ready to move in and occupy these spaces. So the first one I'll highlight is the Willowcrest Townhomes. And I'm sure you're all familiar with this one as well, because it did receive the Governor Smart Communities Award for Smart Partnerships. And this was a partnership between the Renton Housing Authority, the City of Renton, and Homestead Community Land Trust to bring on homeownership affordable projects in the form of townhomes. We are excited to see people moving into these units. Moving on to the Sunset Oaks Development, this is also located up in the Sunset area by Sunset Neighborhood Park. This is a Renton Housing Authority project as well, which will bring onboard 16 new affordable dwelling units up in the Sunset area. The Arlington Townhome Project, this is a condominium-style four-story townhome development located near the West Hill. It also includes seven affordable homeownership units amongst the 47 market-rate townhomes. This was a partnership between the private developer and Homestead Community Land Trust to bring the affordable homeownership units to market. And then change of pace here, the Chick-fil-A Restaurant, a brand-new restaurant down on Grady. I hope you've all had an opportunity to go down and get a bite to eat, chicken sandwich or some waffle fries, and we're excited to see them opened up in the City of Renton. We also issued the Certificate of Occupancy for the Valley Medical Center New Medical Office Building. This was a significant addition to the Valley Medical Office Campus. It included 160,000 square feet of medical office building and over 1,000 new parking stalls. You all may have been in this building. It has been operating under a temporary Certificate of Occupancy that we worked with them on due to some COVID, but we're excited to issue the final Certificate of Occupancy for this building. It was a big undertaking. And then a brand-new warehouse distribution site down off of Monster Road, which brings online over 77,000 square feet of warehouse and distribution. And then moving on to projects that are currently under construction. And highlighted here is the Forest Terrace subdivision. This is a 25-lot, single-family residential subdivision right on the border of Renton and Newcastle. And as you can see in the picture on the left, is the significant amount of infrastructure and construction work that goes into projects like this. And this highlights some of the work that our construction inspectors do out in the field, ensuring that the utilities and the roadways are all installed correctly and the development happens as expected for the city's future maintenance. Okay, there is the next one. And then looking at our small cell works. So this is some work that our development engineering team has worked really hard to develop a small cell pole. The image on the left, let me describe what a small cell pole is. So this is our light pole that includes a 5G cell unit in it to allow for improved cell service around the city. And our Justin Johnson, our construction engineering manager, and his team worked really hard to develop this light pole design. And hot off the press on the bottom of the slide here, you can see some actually fabricated small cell light poles. We've been waiting a long time to see these, and we expect the first two to be installed near the Landing. So keep your eye out for these new poles going up. But what's really exciting here is this design that they worked on is actually becoming a prototype for multiple jurisdictions around the city, and it's something that works for all of our providers, so we can have a consistent light standard throughout the city. Now, moving on to projects that I put in the category as approved, which means that they were permitted, but they've gone through the permitting process, but we haven't issued a permit to allow them to start construction. And I will admit, the Puget Sound Energy Project, slightly on the fence there, I think they have a little bit of work they've started now, given what time it is. We're in February of 2022. But this project was a multi-jurisdictional review permit process that included an upgrade from the 115 KV transmission lines to 230 KV transmission lines. There's four miles of these lines that go through the City of Renton. And as a part of this permitting process, we worked with some local artists to come up with art wraps for the tall power poles that will go throughout the city at 11 locations. And you can see the graphics here that the artists have provided. And once these are installed, these art wraps will be approximately 25 feet tall. They're going to add a lot of color to that corridor, and we're really excited to see some of this art go up around the city. Also permitted, the Cedar River Apartments Development, which includes 481 multifamily residential units, 5,000 square feet of ground floor retail, and a 25,000-square-foot office building, which is a standalone office building on the corner. This site is located just upstream of the Renton Community Center, right along the Cedar River. And you can see down in the bottom-left corner, this is the office building. And then the other two images are renderings of the residential and retail development. The Sunset Gardens is a Renton Housing Authority affordable housing development that includes 76 affordable housing units and over 13,000 square feet of ground floor office space. This office space will be the new home of the Renton Housing Authority's formal offices. This is also located up in the Sunset Highlands. The Watershed Apartments, I like this one because I think about sitting in City Hall and having everybody behind the diodes and thinking you could look out the window and see this site right down along Grady Way. But this is the vacant site that has the billboard on it right across from City Hall, and it has been permitted to develop 145 affordable residential units. And as a part of this project, we have included a pedestrian promenade or public connection between Grady Way and Burnett Linear Park. So once that's completed, it will allow for pedestrians and bicyclists to easily make that connection through there and get to Burnett Linear Park and into downtown. I do believe that the billboard has been removed, just in that way.
Yes, Vanessa.
Yeah, I thought so. That was a recent advancement here. Park Five Apartments, this is a mixed-use market-rate development up in the Sunset Highlands that includes 69 residential units and over 4,000 square feet of commercial. There are eight affordable units embedded in this development as well, and it's located where the Pizza Hut and the Subway are currently today, if you know where that is, along Harrington. Some more graphics of this one. And then the Renton School District has permitted a brand-new, state-of-the-art elementary school that will be two stories, located on Duval and Northeast 12th. It's a 77,000-square-foot elementary school that includes playfields and outdoor playgrounds and outdoor classroom, as well as suspended perking and bus drop-off. Okay, looking forward, so this is kind of exciting. These numbers you see here, I do want to caveat them that this is a rough estimate of what we're seeing coming through when you look at our pre-applications, our current land use applications, and permits that are potentially under permitting process but have not been issued. There's a possibility for these numbers to fluctuate and change. But what we're really seeing here, and I wanted to highlight here, is a significant amount of development and interest in the City of Renton moving forward. And we're not focused just on residential, but we're looking at over 8,000 residential units, of which 631 appear to be potential affordable units. And we ran some numbers this morning out of this inquiry that we received. And just to show my point, in 2019, we permitted 24 multifamily apartment units through the Building Department. In 2020, we permitted 60, and we're looking forwards to 2022 to have 978 apartment units. You can see the numbers are significantly going up. And this is not isolated to just residential. It's also looking at commercial and office square footage. We're projecting over, potentially over a million square feet of office and commercial coming through our permitting department looking forward. Okay, now I get to talk about the Planning Division. So refocusing simply on the Planning Division here. Our current planning team in 2021 held 81 pre-application meetings, processed 156 land use permits, and held 12 public hearings. Our development engineering team, and I like to say, we like to use the word completed a lot, we have a lot of different definitions. In this context, it means the construction's actually completed. As you can see, the number of permits have been issued in 2021, and a significant amount will be completed in 2022. But to highlight here are small cell permits. These are those light poles that I showed on the previous slide. As you can see, we've issued 74, but none of them are completed because they haven't been installed. So we do expect to see 74 of those pop up around the city in 2022. So looking at our Property and Technical Services Division, we've worked tirelessly through 2021 to advance our presence online and improve our customer service through our digital portals. And that includes our permit portal, as well as establishing what we call our Virtual Permit Center. Our Virtual Permit Center is really an opportunity to replicate our walk-in permit center that we've held on the sixth floor prior to COVID. And it's an opportunity for the public to get online, request an appointment, and have a one-on-one conversation with a planner, development engineer, or a permit technician, and have a face-to-face conversation via Teams. And we are really excited to have that available to the public and improve that customer service. And this team has continued to improve the connection between our website and our permitting portal to improve our customers' experience when it comes to permit application processes. Okay, and Rob, you are up next.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Yep. Perfect. Hey, thank you, everybody, for the time. I sure appreciate it. I'm Rob Shewie, building official, City of Renton. For those of you who don't know who I am, fresh face, right? All right. Development Services, what do we do? That's a good question. Simply put, we're the building department. We review building plans for architectural, structural compliance with the codes, and we issue permits for such things as building construction, mechanical plumbing installations, electrical work, sign installations, and building demolitions. We also have a team of building and electrical inspectors who perform the inspections to ensure that the work performed in our city equifies with all local codes and industry standards. Additionally, our department ensures that we have clean, safe, and livable neighborhoods through our code compliance efforts. Last year in 2021, our building and electrical inspectors completed nearly 14,000 inspections, as you can see, with 261 working days in 2021. That came to 53 inspections per day for inspector. Also, here you can see a view of the inspection list that can be found on the city's permitting website. Our citizens can use the website to give results to their inspections and request inspections as well. I also think it's important to note that the City of Renton was ahead of a lot of jurisdictions when it came to pandemic. I apologize for that. We had already employed a system that allowed us to accept digital plans and allowed citizens to stay home, but still get their permits. When the pandemic hit, a lot of the departments around the area were all scrambling to figure out what they were going to do to be able to get plans, review them, and submit permits. We were already ahead of the curve on that. Next slide. Our permit technicians are the heart of the permit center. They oversee the intake of permit applications, they review them for completeness, collect fees, route plans and drawings to other departments for review, send the approved permits and plans to the applicants, and they responded over to 11,000 emails in 2021. They're busy. Also, as you can see, there were over 4,400 permits issued last year in 261 working days. That comes to 7,000 permits per day that we issue. Currently, a lion's share of our permits are available online, but there are some, such as permits that need plan review, that still require that the permit tech upload and download the submissions and approve documents to and from the applicants. You know, we're going to be working on that very soon. Upcoming, we will be working on something where we will be able to issue pretty much everything directly online. Additionally, Plan Review Department completed reviews of over 1,400 sets of architectural and engineering plans, between two plans examiners, averaging over two and a half plan reviews per day, all while also reviewing and approving the plan sets for the project program. And let's not forget that the Development Services Department also collected over $5.5 million in revenue this year. Next slide. As you can see, 2021, there were total of 566 code pages. I'm sorry, can you go back? I'm sorry, go one more. There we go. 656 business licenses were approved by code enforcement as well. Code violations are investigated in cases that are open in response to complaints that we receive. There are multiple ways for our citizens to submit a complaint, such as regular response, the code compliance telephone hotline, or direct email. As you can see on the slide, there's a number of different types of violations that we deal with, and here listed are the top six. Over the next few slides, we're going to show you some before-and-after photos of some code cases that code compliance dealt with, and was ultimately able to make the difference in some of the other movements. Before and after. And there's another one that's there. So hopefully, I was able to give you an understanding of what community development does, what we do, and the differences we make. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to Angie.
Thank you, Rob. Good reminder for me to introduce myself. I appreciate that. My name is Angie Mathias. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager with the City of Renton.
I don't want to disturb you, so I'm leaving the room now.
Okay, thanks, baby. So long-range planning does the work of sort of the changes to code and policy development and changes and shifts in the city policies regarding things. One of the, probably the biggest, most sort of customer-friendly and things that we're really proud of that came out of our work group, and this didn't just come out of long-range planning, this came from development engineering and current planning as well, but to launch, to conceive of, and work through all the development of our permit-ready accessory dwelling unit program. And basically, what that means is that we took a look at all the different architectural styles of the City of Renton and worked with an architect to develop accessory dwelling units that can be built that will match the style of the primary, the primary single-family home, and that people then can come in and not only, we will give you these plans for free. You can come in and see them and see what works for you, how much space you have on your site. They range in size from about 500 square feet to almost 1,000 square feet. So they really are just accessory dwelling units. But we will, one of the things that we're doing that other jurisdictions are not doing is really working with applicants to help them see what's possible on their site and develop those site plans and basically hold their hands all the way through the process as much as we can. We can't go with them to the potential builders' meetings and stuff like that, but as far as from the city perspective, we are taking it as far as we can to really hopefully help see accessory dwelling units built in the city. We see this as a key to potential affordable housing, as well as a way for potential existing homeowners to stay in their homes. Maybe they're a resident with just some revenue stream, and so they could build an accessory dwelling unit and then have rent coming in. Or maybe they move out to the accessory dwelling unit, and then they have a younger family member come and move in and help support them as they age. At least two of these accessory dwelling units were built to comply with ADA requirements, Americans with Disability Act, so people can navigate with wheelchairs and all of that. Additionally, at least two plans have been pre-reviewed for potential certification as very environmentally friendly and meeting a lot of those requirements. There's basically eight basic floor plans, and then just the fronts. It's amazing, I really enjoy watching a presentation on this because a floor plan stays exactly the same, but they work through like a contemporary design and a craftsman design and like a 50s mid-century design. And all is changed as the facade and maybe some of the pitches of roofs and stuff, but basically, it all stays the same, and it's all been pre-evaluated for engineering and meeting all of our planning requirements. In late summer, August or so, we held a virtual open house and had well over 100 folks attend that open house, and it was very well-received. People were very excited about this program. Residents very excited that the city is being so forward-thinking and willing to take such bold steps to really try to keep them in the City of Renton and to create opportunity for them. And then subsequently, we've had staff present to and be interviewed for a number of articles, the most recent of which was just published either earlier this week, I'm already, it's only Monday, so late last week, in the Realtors Newsletter that was very favorable and very supportive of this program and saying, hey, look, other jurisdictions in Puget Sound, you need to look to Renton because they really have figured this out, and this is a model that other jurisdictions should be looking at. So this is a very feel-good story for us, and we're very proud of the work, but also very excited that hopefully we'll get some accessory dwelling units moving forward. Thank you, Vanessa. So we adopted the Housing Action Plan in 2021 that was primarily the work of our Equity, Housing, and Human Services Work Group, and primarily lifted through that, but we helped them usher that through sort of our legislative process with our Planning Commission and our Planning and Development Committee. Subsequent to that, they applied for and received a $100,000 grant from our Department of Commerce to do these three things that you see listed there. Some of this will be to pool money with our South County Regional Group. A large part of this will be used for residential land use study, which will feed into our comprehensive plan update, and so that'll help feed and inform the work that we then continue to do as a city. And then another $20,000 to hopefully help start the funding towards creating a Nexus Study for linkage fees so that we can start generating a pool of money that we can point towards affordable housing based on new commercial development that comes to the city. So saying that commercial development, you do have impacts on the affordability of housing in our community, and so you need to pay so that we can help make sure affordable housing is coming to the City of Renton. Another project and plan that was adopted and finished this year was our Transit-Oriented Development Subarea Plan, or the Rainier-Grady Junction, TOD Subarea. This is about the sound transit, Bus Rapid Transit and Transit Center relocation at Rainier and Grady that is coming in, and that plan was finalized and finished. A big body of work for our group, along with a consultant, but then we also applied for a grant from the Department of Commerce to do what we call an environmental impact statement. So we're going to front-load all of that review that needs to get done in advance of development. We're always required, well, very few exceptions, but we're pretty much always required to evaluate potential impacts development has, even our development regulations have on our city and the region. And so this is front-loading all of that, so that when a developer comes in and says, I'd like to build, excuse me, this 250-unit project here on this site, we can say, great, you're just taking this out of this pot, and we've already evaluated all the impacts, and here's what you need to do to mitigate those. So this is a huge project for us. This is what we did up in the Sunset Highlands, and that you're now seeing a lot of, finally seen that big payoff and benefit of that things are finally clicking and moving along at a pretty rapid pace now that we're going. Docket items, this is sort of our bread and butter that keeps us incredibly busy as we move things through the legislative process with public hearings and meetings with our Planning Commission, and seeking public opinion, and asking our Planning Commission to weigh in and provide comment and commentary. And each one of these items, some of them like cottage housing, that was a pretty big, wide, and comprehensive project that took on a lot of work and is a big work item. But something like the bonus density third-party thing, that was not that big of a deal. It was sort of just a small few bit of changes, but each one still has to follow that process, and we have to follow all the rules of making changes to our code to do that. And so you can see that we worked through a number, a great number of items this year. Other accomplishments, we adopted interim zoning controls and then final regulations for our urban center zone around the Landing. We worked with our partners of our school districts to adopt their capital facilities plans, so they can continue to collect school impact fees and to mitigate the effects of new growth on our school districts. And then we adopted two multifamily tax exemptions, both in the Sunset area, one for Solera and one for Sunset Terrace, and that's helped those projects move forward. They, quite honestly, some of them could not move forward without that benefit and without that incentive. We adopted new growth targets for the city and worked through that with our Planning and Development Committee, and that directs our path forward for the next 20 years, looking at how we're going to accommodate new households and new jobs. And then we also worked through and partnered with King County on the development of our county-wide planning policies. And that is all for long-range planning. We've been very busy, as everyone else in the city, it seems. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. My name is Amanda Asker, and I'm the Acting Economic Development Director. We've had quite a few changes in staffing and the team in economic development over the last year, but we were still able to maintain focus, and we really concentrated on three areas that I want to highlight. So the first one is our support for the arts. We are part of the Arts Commission. Most of you are aware of that program. We were able to fund $108,515 for the different events, 55 events in the community. Last year, we did have a rolling grant application, so they came in throughout the year. We supported them all the way through the year. We are changing things a little bit next year, but I was excited to see the different art projects go up around the city, and I'm sure you've seen them as well, kind of popping up here and there. So next year, we'll be bringing those to you, and hopefully, we'll have just as many. The other area of focus we had was on the next slide, which is our business support. We still saw and had the impact from the COVID last year with all of the changes, and it impacted our businesses. So we had a lot of partner organizations, such as Startup 425, also the East Side Team and some South Side communities that we partner with, that really provided some support for our small businesses that were free. And this was what through financial assistance programs, also just giving them opportunities to learn different business things to help them navigate the new normal, as we all are trying to learn that. We also, with the Art of Funding, had asked for some money to support our small business. We were awarded the $600,000, we'll set aside for that. So we've had our first round and awarded 30 small businesses to 225,000. We continue to work with those. We continue to work with those businesses to make sure that we get them, give them the money as quickly as possible. And the other support area that we focused on is our community support. So we really spent a lot of time working on creative marketing for our community, but also a lot of our partners within the city. We also had a billboard at the Sea-Tac Airport and a couple of different raffles and events that we did. And we did pick winners for those as well. So that was kind of exciting. We also had 14 LTAC events last year, which is the lodging tax. And those were awarded at $421,500. So they had a significant impact in our community and bringing people to that area and providing arts at a cheaper cost for them. We did a lot of efforts, continued efforts on the civic core and just working with as many partners in our teams as we can. So those are the three areas that we focused on and we will continue that focus this year as we start 2022 off. We still have 375,000 that we are going to be working on the business grants and to roll out this year. We did nail down the LTAC events for this year and that's 460,000. And then another 100,000 for the arts programs. And then I kind of calculated at almost 900,000 that's already slated for work in the downtown area this year. So we have quite a lot coming up and we're looking forward to all of that. I think that, and I think we turn it back over to Chip now.
Great. Well, thank you, Amanda and Angie and Vanessa. And this, I just want to say to the council, if this didn't come through, you know, how proud all of us are in community and economic development to advance these important initiatives on behalf of the Renton businesses and the Renton residents. We believe that change is good when done correctly and we take a lot of pride in the work that we do. But at the end of the day, we couldn't do it without the support of the council through your policy direction and your budget support, as well as with the mayor and the Planning Commission. So this is more of a report back to you is what we've been able to accomplish for you, for the greater Renton community, you know, with the support we've been able to receive from you and a chance for all of us to say as well, thank you. We, we really take a lot of pride in this work, as I said. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't add to that the hard work of the group that's not here tonight, and that is our Planning Commission. Although I can say for James and Ed, they are ex officio Planning Commission members. And I think Councilmember O'Halloran can be described as that too, as being a Planning Commissioner widow for a number of years. And, you know, our Planning Commission does such an incredible body of work on behalf of the department and the council. And they work tirelessly. James will tell you that last year, usually we like to give the month of August off for the Planning Commission. We worked them every Wednesday in August because our workload was such this last year. And, you know, we just said, we're just going to keep bringing it to them until they say uncle and they never did. And we so appreciate the work of the Planning Commission and their support of our department and you on the council as well. So with that, I'll just conclude unless there's any questions and just say thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chip, and thank you, Vanessa and Rob and Angie and Amanda. It was a great, very confident presentation. I suspect there may be some questions or comments coming your way. And I see the firsthand raise is Councilmember Albertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chip, I didn't even know saying uncle was an option, so that's the first thing I was saying. I actually have two quick questions, one for Rob, one for Angie. You know, Rob, for anybody who's kind of gone through a permitting process for this and that and the other, you know, it's probably a thankless job on the, on the department side. And people always say, oh, it takes too long. So I'm always curious, or I'm curious here, you know, you had that up. From a standpoint of streamlining the permitting process, it seems like that would be a never ending type of goal. Was anything done this year when you look at the numbers and look at your processes and things you put in place that, that speak to that?
Yeah, I think the number one thing we were able to do, kind of like what I was talking about prior to COVID-19 hitting. We were just at that point beginning to accept building permit applications online. So back before this, if you needed to come in and get an electrical permit to run a circuit out to your, you know, out to your barbecue because you needed power there, you would literally have to come into the City Hall, fill out the application, submit it to the clerk. She would have to, you know, blah, 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 blah. It takes time. There's a line. There's people. You know, now you can literally go online and have that permit in 10 minutes. You don't have to come to City Hall. You don't have to face anybody. You don't have to come to the counter. You know, I think that is probably the biggest thing we've been able to do. The other thing, you know, like I also said, was that right now we still have some permits, for example, single family residences and commercial projects where we require plan review on those. Right now, our system isn't automated enough in our, in our, in our online presence to be able to accept those, those plans yet. So what we have to do is literally the permit tech has to contact the applicant, give them a link, say, please upload your plans. They have to upload the plans, then it has to be routed, and then when it's all done, we have to send it back. That's all going to be streamlined, so that will all be done automatically as well. It really don't have to be this back and forth between the permit techs and the applicant. They still have their jobs to do. They still have to review all the applications for completeness and whatnot, do all the routing and stuff. But, you know, I think it's also, if I have one more thing, try to keep in mind, and that is, when, you know, we talk about issuing permits, it's, it's a citywide process, not just a building department process. You know, we're the guys who take in paperwork. We're the guys who actually issue that building permit. But every department, planning, development, engineering, you know, the building department, fire department, everybody reviews these applications as well as us. And so what I try to tell people sometimes is, you know, our, the building department, we're, we're only as fast as the slowest calendar herd. You know, there are times when the fire department may, may have a problem and they've got to contact that applicant and say, hey, listen, your submitted wasn't complete what I needed, you know, we need you to get us some more information. And while that's happening in the background, we're all sitting here waiting for that information so we can go ahead and, you know, and give our replies to their applications. So that's what I just try to remind applicants is that just because I'm the building department, it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm the one that takes so long. You know, there's, there's a lot of other people who need other information as well. So, yeah, always help, always, always good to help.
That's fair. Appreciate it. And Angie, real quickly, as far as the ADUs though, there's something you said at the very end made me think about this question. If I'm, if I'm ready to put my, that way it won't fit in my backyard, but is it ready to rock and roll? Is there, I mean, is that active now and or, and so have people actually put in for this stuff, you know, for, to get it going or what?
Yeah, so it's, it's absolutely active and we are working with a number of applicants to see and try to design their site and make sure that it's all going to fit and because some units won't work with other sites and all of that kind of stuff. And we have to make sure it's located in the right place and then talk about like water connections, sewer connections, all of that sort of thing. We have a few applicants that are actually close and we're hopeful that they'll be able to move through the permitting process. As a totally random side footnote, one of the things that is well beyond our control that folks are getting tripped up on is construction permits from lending industries, the lending industry. ADUs are still, even though they've been around for a very long time, it's still not something that they're super comfortable with. And so unless people had a, have a lot of equity already built up in their house and could just go ahead and use a home equity loan, sometimes those construction permits can be really difficult, not permits, but the construction loans can be difficult to get. So that is a piece of work that sort of unrelated to our work, but that we do continue to sort of try, find, try to find ways to advocate for and to try to make those connections hopefully moving forward. Because we really believe this is a huge part of the puzzle of affordable housing and accommodating density in a, in a way that works for the city. So we're really trying everything that we can to try to go ahead and make those things happen as much as we possibly can. And I know Chip is continuing to work on that particular nut of trying to connect lenders with potential ADU construction.
Yeah. If I can add, Councilmember Albertson, to what Angie was saying on that. Through that end, we, as we peel away the onion, literally, you know, to really find out what are the impediments to this form of affordable housing, you know, as Angie said, we were down to a couple of them here and we're getting close. But the lending institutions are a big deal. And so we are looking at a couple of different options that we're going to advance for council consideration and discussion. And but we're reaching out to the lending institutions and the lending agencies to figure out how can we do these differently? Because as Angie said, this is not something they're used to providing loans are. And unless you have a lot of equity, they're not going to do it. So we're working with, fortunately, we have First Savings in Renton that is just an incredible city corporate partner that we have. And we're working with Joe over there to figure out how can we look at these differently in terms of providing access to capital for people to be able to build these, because it's all about access to capital. The other thing that we have less control over that we're all sensitive to right now is construction costs. And that has been very problematic and things are starting to finally look like they're going to normalize. But for a homeowner to go out and build one of these, you know, the costs have gone up by at least 50% compared to where they were a couple of years ago on ADUs. We have a current Renton resident that is going through the process right now. And you all may have heard of him. He and his wife are Randy and Kathy Corman. And they're going through the process right now. And it's really been fun for staff to be working with Randy and Kathy. And I think we're going to learn a lot from this experience, working with Randy and Kathy on theirs as well, that we can learn from and improve the program. But it's just such a great opportunity to provide affordable housing in a way that we've never been able to capitalize on before. And we're, you know, James, we're continuing just to peel it away, you know, until we, you know, reach our objective here.
All right. Thanks.
I saw Councilmember Prince has his hand raised. He put it back down. And so I will go to Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. I have a quick clarifying question in regards to economic development. And please forgive me as I am a newer council member. Did the COVID business relief grants go through the Economic Development Division? Yeah.
Amanda, do you want to? Well, it was both us and finance.
Okay. And so my, I've spoken to a couple, several businesses who actually did not receive any grant funding in the downtown corridor in particular, and I was curious, and I know we're running out of time, but will there be more information on the matrix of like how those grants were decided, the grant application process? Who, like what the cutoffs were, the disqualifiers? Because the businesses, all the businesses received the exact same letter of why they were disqualified, which didn't actually personalize to them why their business was disqualified. And so there were several businesses, specifically like Urban Sprouts, Sparkle, places like that, that were very shocked. And they didn't give, like, they didn't get a clear answer. And so is there going to be more clarity around that? Is there going to be more release or transparency around that matrix for that decision process in the future going forward?
Actually, we were writing those today. Our finance department reached out to me this morning about providing that additional clarification of what those disqualifiers are. We really think that will help as we do the next round, because we are going to be working on the next round. And so providing that information, we got them out very quickly. And so we actually have put together a lot of FAQs, actually put together some more tip sheets and information for the business owners to help them through this process, because some of the documentation wasn't clear about what we needed. And I will tell you that it's crazy what is needed for this ARPA money and federal funding. But I think we were trying to get it out so quickly, all the rules haven't been qualified. And we, now that we're getting into it, really know what we're up against. And so we, those letters should go out this week specifically telling them which, what they were not, denial for that business. And then we're hoping that in the second round they can overcome that and be qualified for the, the grant.
Yeah. And if I can add to that, Amanda, for Councilmember Rivera, you know, there's some lessons learned, obviously, from the feedback we've received. So two of the lessons learned was we didn't get the geographic limits correct for the boundary we set. So we are reevaluating and adjusting that boundary. That was lesson number one. Lesson two we learned is we only allowed retail businesses to apply before. This time we're allowing service businesses to apply as well. So we're working, those were two of the fundamental things that we didn't achieve last time that we hope to achieve to address better the needs of the business community.
Thank you so much. And then just one follow up, was this the first business grant program the city Renton had done on its own?
I know we did some with the CARES Act, so I was not in economic development at the time, so I cannot speak to that. But I know this was the first of the ARPA spending for the small business grants.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And that was on my list of questions as well, so I appreciate the answer. I'm sure others do. Councilmember Prince?
Thank you. Chip, thank you so much. And thank you to all your staff for a great presentation, but more than anything, for a lot of work that has been put together to have these results. Now, King County City of Seattle, Bellevue has accepted more role this last decade than Renton has. And that's a big volumes of the hard work that you guys have put, have done to be able to achieve this. Now we're looking forward for the new comprehensive plan of the, of the, the new, is a updated comprehensive plan, the 10 years comprehensive plan. And that's going to be a balance act to follow, because as, as we want to continue providing housing for everybody, we also need to have, not forget the quality of life of the people that will come to live. And this could be, I'm so looking forward to see the result of that work while we give, we're, you know, new ideas of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it in a way that our longtime residents and our new residents can try and succeed living in Renton. Thank you very much again for all the work that your department has put together always.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, I might chime in with one. We have just a few minutes left. I want to make sure we get a break in. We'll run it right down to the wire, so maybe a couple more minutes. If there's any other questions that you think of between now and then. The question I had was on the pace for affordable units. There was that slide 23. And just clarification, make sure I understood that correctly. Is that, what's the time date we're anticipating that the 631 affordable units by? If I didn't hear that correctly in there, is that in the near future or is that in the longer term future?
Longer term, longer term.
And so my follow up on that would be is, is in terms of the 244,000 units that King County has identified that we need to build recently. Now, I know, I know it's not like an exact proportional share. But how does that measure up, I think, and that mark would be the question I would ask. And knowing, you know, certainly some of those might be naturally occurring affordable units potentially in there, but just how, how are we measuring against kind of that long term goal within that?
Yeah, we're, we actually haven't, we haven't done that breakdown yet. But right now, we are, based on the work that Hannah has done, we are keeping pace. The issue is, we're keeping pace with our numbers right now. The issue is looking out over the long term, as the need increases, we are not increasing exponentially at the rate we need to. So that's going to be the challenge. But right now, with a number of the regulatory and market incentives that we're offering, whether it's bonus densities for affordable units, whether it's using multifamily property tax exemption for affordable units, whether it's fee waivers, fees and impact fees for affordable units, we're using a number of different tools and we're actually, we're doing okay. You know, we're, we're not doing great, but we're, we're holding our ground. The challenge is going to be the long term.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. And I do, I also want to, Councilmember Prince's comments in terms of the work you've been doing is evident. So I do appreciate that and the focus on many of these slides on the progress that's been being made. It's, it's an absolutely huge lift, housing. So I do want to commend you all for that work that's been done and the progress that's been made. I don't want that to be lost in my question. It's just this huge mountain. So I know we'll keep chipping away at it. That was not a pun, chipping away at it. So the other question, well, the other, two, two final comments unless there's another question. That was not a pun, chipping away at it. So the other question, well, the other, two final comments unless there's another question for folks here tonight. And these are more just kind of fun ones. Well, first one, first one serious. I want to definitely commend, I know I've seen plenty of comments from my neighbors on the Code Enforcement House on 116th. So it was nice to see that cleanup. I actually noticed that running by the other day. So I'm sure there's others around the city and probably other examples you could have shown. So, but that was a great example that we showed there. And then finally, I got to go all the way back to, I think it was slide two or three on the Topgolf Groundbreaking. You don't have to put it up on the screen, but I just want to say, anyone who wants to look back later at that dirt pile that Councilmember O'Halloran was flinging up, she came to work. It was up there. So way to go. And if there's nothing else, I can go ahead and adjourn us here. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, you might have noticed though that I had my hat on backwards with that big gray band across the front.
I didn't. I only saw that dirt pile like way up in the air above everybody else's. All right. Seeing no other questions. Thank you again, CED. We'll try to do the 2022 year-end wrap-up maybe in 2022 if we can, at least not punch you off into February next year. So with that, we are adjourned and we'll reconvene as a full council in about nine minutes. Thank you all.